On 9:00 AM, I will call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call Rol? Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Here.
Honorable Kathy Clark?
Here.
Honorable Ralph Heschler?
Present.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Yes.
Honorable George Cigetti?
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item number B2, Silent Meditation. I'd like to ask everyone to please join me in 15 seconds of silent meditation. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item B3, The Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is B4, Approval of the Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for December 11th of 2019 as submitted, or are there any changes or corrections?
Mayor Whitehead would like to make a motion that we approve the agenda as submitted.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for December 11th as submitted. Are there any further questions, comments, concerns? Harry, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item C, Public Comment. Let me get our list. Thank you. Again, I remind you, I have a list of people that I will call in order. Please, when you approach the podium, give your name and your address. Any documentation that needs to be given to the commissioners, please submit it and put it in the little black box right next to the podium. So, the first person I have this morning for public comment is Carl.
Actually, Carol.
Oh, excuse me, Carol. Sorry, Carol.
Carol.
I didn't get close enough. Carol. Sorry about that.
It's probably my writing. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everyone. I want to talk about the moratorium on the smart meters, and I want to say that I believe we really need it, because we need the time to do some more homework. We need to do much more before approving them. The more you know. Landis-Gear has some stuff to hide. At one point, they put documents, they made the documents available through a court to a protester, and then, within the next year, they turned around and sued the protester to hide the documents and put a gag order on him, what was in the documents. So I urge you to consider some of the reasons why PNM has banned smart meters in Santa Fe, Albuquerque, Las Vegas, Plata, Rudos, Tularosa, Alamogordo, Silver City, Lurdesburg, Demi. This wasn't a simple decision. It included the fact that they had no proof the devices save money, produce energy efficiency, the customers wanted them. PNM cited insufficient public input and no evaluation of alternatives, the lack of data privacy, that's important to me, no cybersecurity. I like to use my phone to lower my air conditioning at home. I don't want somebody hacking my system in Singapore somewhere and doing the same thing. Two comments I found about PNM banning them. Wonderful. New Mexico will be a serious consideration for our retirement. New Mexico is looking better and better as the place to be. These two people ain't coming here if we get these machines. And what about Michelle Mancini in South Carolina, who was arrested when she removed the meter she felt was making her sick? She's still fighting that in court. The homework might include research on what these devices are associated with. A wide range of nasty events. Fires, explosions, bills, skyrocketing, health harm, health harm to people, and pets to the environment, extortion, spying, hacking, control. Smart grids are radiation-emitting devices proliferating all over the world. They are being installed without informed consent, without full disclosure, that they work and what they do with the personal data they collect. Can we opt out? I've read in more than one place on the web this morning, opting out can cost up to $41 per month. That's almost more than why I pay for electricity, but no. Touted for accuracy, but they monitor everything you do and what you do it. In an NBC4 report, evidence shows that German smart meters allow them to snoop on unencrypted data. The Privacy Information Center warns about the numerous privacy dangers associated, including behavior tracking for home invasions, tracking rent or lease behavior, profiling, identity theft. So, uh, shut up now. This is already a big homework assignment. The moratorium will buy us some time to get all that done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carol. The next person on our list is Jack Noel.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Jack Noel, and I'd like to thank Carol for covering many topics, and as Paul Harvey once stated, now the rest of the story. One of the things that we failed to do in our due diligence when we evaluated the vendors was to really look into the background of these companies. Landis-Gear is and was owned by Toshiba, who also owned Westinghouse. Westinghouse bid on a number of large power generation stations and ran into some problems, and they started to have a lot of lawsuits. So what Toshiba did was they tried to sell Landis-Gear on the open market. They had no buyers at all. So they went to Switzerland and they did an IPO. So now, Landis-Gear is a Swiss company that is primarily owned by Toshiba to cut the liabilities. One of the problems with Landis-Gear is that they're right now involved in a number of lawsuits. One in California is patent infringement. The other one is a class action health lawsuit that is gaining steam very strongly. Another are the fire liabilities, where they catch fire on the side of the house, which in many cases is a function of a poor meter box with a new meter, and that's where the resistance causes the fire. This subject has not been addressed in our aging community, where we have a lot of old utility boxes. The other one is a lack of performance. Central Louisiana Electrical Co-op with 300,000 users is suing Landis-Gear, and by the way, they brought in the fourth highest bid for our system to fix their problem. The town of Aspen has dropped out of the contract with Landis-Gear, and they brought in the second highest bidder to fix the problem. From what I've been able to research on the web and speaking to people in the trade is that nobody's betting on Landis-Gear. And especially with our system, where we like the AMI system, because we can add water, smart meters, we can add parking meters, we can add lights and everything else. By the time all of this evolved, there may be no Landis-Gear to satisfy what we need. The smart move is to start up very incrementally. If anybody's been reading the paper on the internet, the economy of the world is challenging, to say the least, and I think that we should have the foresight to look at that, reduce our spending, consolidate, look to the people who are actually the owners of this town to contribute, to reach out, to touch them, and not exclude them from the policies and the procedures that are done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Noel, could I get you to, uh, give us your address just for the record, please? I don't think you noted that in the.
It's 316.
Thank you, sir. Reminder, when you approach the podium, even if I call your name, please give your name again and your address. Thank you. The next person on the list is Diane Lombardo.
Diane Lombardo, 704 Silver. I'm here to talk about a different kind of animal today, and the question is, I know it's a little early in the game, but what are you doing New Year's Eve? I don't know how many of you know, we've been doing for the past several years, a turtle ascension for our New Year's Eve celebration, our very unique turtle ascension. We do it at Healing Waters Plaza, and it is sponsored by the Arts Council and the Chamber of Commerce. And also, we are supported big time by Jack Decat and Decat 71 Ty-Dye. It's a very unique celebration, where we raise a turtle, pay homage to a turtle, at Healing Waters Plaza, and we don't do it at midnight, because we're old. So, we do it at 10 o'clock to keep friendly with old people and young people alike. We invite nonprofits to set up a table at no charge, sell their food, hot drinks, whatever, and get the word out about your nonprofit. We're not alone on New Year's Eve. The brewery will be open from 3 till 12:30-ish. They will have live music from 8 till 11:30 from Tribe United. Sierra Grande has said that they are going to be serving takeout only on New Year's Eve until some, till things slow down, and then, as long as is needed. So, this is a truly tier C tradition. It's growing, and just come out, because, and why turtles? Okay, we got a turtle, Turtleback Mountain, of course. Our 90-million-year-old turtle that was found in Sierra County. But we have turtles in the desert, turtles in the lake, turtles in the river. I can name you any number of, and we'll have a slideshow showing you the turtles of Sierra County. So come out. We raise the turtle at 10 o'clock, but come out early and check us out. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on the agenda is Baxter Brown and Sherry.
I'm Sherry Fletcher, 602 North Broadway.
And I'm Baxter Brown, 602 North Broadway.
And what we're here to discuss is, apparently, there's going to be a public hearing or discussion later on in today, and the piece of property is regarding 825 Van Patten Street, and we buttress up to that, and I guess, from what I've understood, I've not seen anything in writing, but from what I understand, that they want to amend that plat. And if that plat is amended, then our property will be involved in that, because there's a ditch that separates us from the county, which is 855 Van Patten. Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, and the fence, at the time, 60 years ago, or 50 years ago, when they put our fence in, he did it just the opposite. That's what Sherry's mom told me. He, I think it's about 10 feet they're looking at on this side of the ditch, I mean, you know, in our yard. So, they'd have to, I'd have to take the fence out and give him 10 feet on the other side of the ditch from where the county building is, but he went down to about like the clothesline. That used to be a, that used to be a lot, like Whitties and them had way back when. And he gave that to Maxine, and I kept, so she kept it away from the ditch, too. She didn't want to own the ditch, because then, oh, the floodwater coming off the hill and the trailer parks and the canyon back there go roaring through there. It's terrible sometimes when they have a big flood. But, anyway, so we, she kept the ditch back, and it's the opposite, because they put the fence up close to the ditch, and we have to move back in the front, but in the back is another lot. In fact, ours is two different properties at one time. So, if I move the fence out to where it goes, I go out about, well, if the old VFW had been there, I'd take part of that corner in, and it goes up to the people. On the other side of the ditch, I go right tight to them, and it goes out into the, into the parking lot, about where the airplane used to be. So, that's how it would be. And I'd have two fences across there, but I didn't know you could run a flood ditch like that through somebody's yard. So that's what it would be, too. Half of my yard would be a flood ditch. And whatever the county gets will also be a flood ditch, two, 10 feet or something. So, that's all.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, folks.
You bet. Thank you.
So, next on the list is, okay, I can't read the first name, but the last name is Crowe.
Hi, my name is Susie Crowe. I am from 7-Eleven Copra. I am against the radiation surveillance devices known as smart meters, smart grid, and 5G technologies. The millipole emissions are 2 one thousandths of a second in duration. So when the utility companies or the vendors tell you that it's 85 seconds of communication with the utility in a 24-hour period, it equates to more than 24,000 pulses emitting continuous radiation. And additionally, the meters have a problem with the switch mode power supply. So every millipole that emits radiation from the smart meter is also spiking dirty electricity on the electrical wiring in our homes. I have handouts showing health effects from the micro watt per centimeter squared, from 1 to 6, which, at 6 micro watts per centimeter squared, it causes DNA damage to ourselves. The meters are emitting 8 micro watts per centimeter square on a continuous basis throughout the day. Dr. Dietrich Klinehard has shown a one-on-one relationship of pregnant women living in homes with smart meters and the birth of autistic children. So, they lied to us when they said the devices were safe. They failed to disclose they would be using them as surveillance devices to track all of our electrical usage and selling that information to third-party vendors like corporations. I wouldn't feel safe or secure in my home, which is my Fourth Amendment constitutional right, having these smart meters anywhere near my home, let alone in the community. And I would ask, any contract that is signed without full disclosure is null and void. I would ask that this contract be voided. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Ms. Ariel.
Good morning, Commissioners, for this opportunity to speak. I appreciate the prior speakers who were against the metering, but I seek to talk about something different today.
Ms. Ariel, can I get you to give us your address, please?
1580 Cabaya Road.
Thank you.
I seek a more inspiring renewable energy ordinance from the city than ordinance 664, one that is equitable. COP25 is taking place in Madrid, Spain, as we have this meeting here today. The escalation of climate change is alarming, far more rapid than thought when the city approved ordinance 664 in 2015. Demands made by youth, "How dare you," are inspiring. I have looked into installing solar panels on my own roof. It's an expense I'm willing to undertake, but the restrictions of ordinance 664 place on me and tie my hands to the fossil fuel grid. These restrictions make me also pay double. Ordinance 664 does not address the needs of our community, nor our planet, nor our children's, children's, children's future. It is not a Green New Deal. We have an imperative and moral obligation to reduce our use of fossil fuels as swiftly as possible. Here in truth or consequences, we are blessed with an abundance of solar, wind, and thermal energy that make it feasible for us to be completely free from use of fossil fuels. It is time to carve out a political will to create a plan to tap into these resources and eliminate our use of fossil fuels. Ordinance 664 restricts renewable capacity to 90% of current electrical use. It does not account for the possibility or the real necessity of a citizen moving off natural gas heating or gasoline or diesel automobile or trucks without greatly increased costs. In a community with a poverty rate of 26% and reliant on considerable personal travel for a number of basic services like medical care and healthier foods, the availability for affordable way to cut all greenhouse gases emissions is mandatory. The wonderful array of renewables at our doorstep give us a fantastic opportunity to become a renewable resource mecca, a model town that other communities would want to emulate. Our city would prosper encouraging new residents. Let's come together to make that feasible. Let's repeal ordinance 664 and devise a new one that is truly abundant with renewables and not a double financial burden in the process. Let's make the Green New Deal bloom. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Di Marino.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Linda Di Marino, on behalf of Main Street Truth or Consequences at 410 Main Street. First of all, I'd like to invite you all to our Old Fashioned Christmas on Friday, 6 to 9:00 PM. It's going to kick off at Evelyn Renfro Park with the Christmas tree lighting, followed by the parade of lights. We have over 40 entries this year, so we're excited about that. And then, of course, there's shopping and visits with Santa and fire barrels and all those other things. And I want to thank the city for collaborating with us on all of the logistics that need to happen for this event. So thank you for that. In the agenda, there is Resolution 2419/20. It says, "Requesting authorization to amend the ICIP to add Spaceport Visitor Center facilities to the fiscal year 2021-2025 ICIP." First of all, I'm just going to say, I find the fact that there's actually going to be a change to the ICIP, and that it's not, like, clearly spelled out on the agenda, not so transparent, and I was having a really difficult time finding, is this the current Spaceport Visitor Center, or is it the one that's been proposed recently? Well, I'm not sure I got 100% answer on that, but I'm going to assume that it's the proposed one up by the highway. And I would just like to say that government has an ethical responsibility when dealing with economic development. Of course, you know, the government's responsibility is to create the infrastructure for economic development, but the ethical part of it comes in with creating infrastructure that will harm other businesses and possibly put them out of business. If government's creating infrastructure, and that's what happens, that's not the best use of government money. So, this is not to say that we are against that possible visitor center. We just really want to know if there is the capacity for both of these, basically, commercial areas to exist together, right? Is this going to, like, take away significantly from the downtown, you know, or are there going to be enough people coming through that both of these areas can thrive and businesses aren't competing to such a degree that one, that they start falling off? So I really think before this gets put on an ICIP, there needs to be some kind of economic impact study, because it's a whole lot of money that the government would be putting into this project. I think that this is due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Linda. Ron Fan.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ron Fan, 316 North Foch. Today, I'm proposing a new experiment for the city government. Not really new, and it's not experimental, but rather a time-honored tradition in our country's history. I propose that we run our upcoming municipal election as an at-large election. All candidates need to be considered equal and not pitted against each other in individual races. There would be single pool of candidates. Each voter would have one vote. This is how state and federal legislative elections are run. We don't have geographic districts, therefore, there is no need for seat races. This splits up, this split up the vote of 300 people of like mind could control every seat. One focus, one focuses the voter, forcing them to choose the best candidate to represent them. One vote per voter eliminates factions and gives their votes better power. In the upcoming election, the top three vote-getters would fill the open seats. There's no automatic wins, no uncontested races. Each candidate would have to prove themselves to the people. If a vacancy occurs before the next election, the fourth vote-getter would get the seat, leaving the election power with the people. All candidates being treated equally removes the fear factor of opposing an incumbent or prominent family name. When you remove seat or block voting, you open up the field to more diverse candidates. Candidates will be forced to listen to a wider base of voters to win a seat, and more responsive representatives give the people more power. The New Mexico Election Code does not require seat voting, neither does the city code. You do not have to change your laws, you just have to do it. What do we have to lose by conducting our next election in this fair manner? This would encourage the public attract candidates with new ideas who have a chance to win and serve the community. This is what we want, after all, isn't it? To reengage the public? Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to give public comment? If so, please come on down to the podium. Hans, I have Lorena coming down first, and then you'll be next, and then the gentleman behind you will be third, okay?
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. Ms. Madrid. Lorena Miller, 512 North Foch. I am the Executive Director of the Geronimo Trail National Seating Byway and the Director of the Visitor Center at 301 South Foch. We work with the Spaceport to open and close the building since, at present time, the Spaceport does not have staff in their room, so we answer questions for them, we refer them to the proper people at the Spaceport. We had a total of 787 visitors in November. Of these, 144 listed their reason is coming to hot, is coming, the hot springs. A total of 183 listed their reason for coming at Spaceport America. Other reasons included vacation, RVing, passing through, looking for a place to spend the winter, looking to move here, the name of the town, visiting relatives, weekend getaway, road trip, business or jobs, and several did not list a reason. We had 399 visitors from 32 different states and 50 visitors from 11 different countries. These included Australia, Belgium, Canada, England, Germany, Mexico, Poland, South Korea, Switzerland, and Taiwan. We had 338 visitors from New Mexico, including 50 from Sierra County. In the first 11 months of this calendar year, we have had 2,452 visitors from New Mexico outside of Sierra County, 4,397 from other states, and 141 visitors from foreign countries. They love our visitor center and want to know its history. It was first built as a municipal building with all of city offices, city police, library, chamber of commerce, and an area for public gatherings in the 1930s. Visitors love to be able to leave their cars or motorcycles parked at the center and walk over to the Geronimo Springs Museum or along Main Street and Broadway to visit the shops and galleries, get something to eat, spend some time at the brewery, and enjoy the quiet of a peaceful small city. Our visitation increases every year. At the end of November, we had 99% of the 2018 total visitation. This was made up in the first two days of December. This was made up in the first two days of December. The trend has held steady from the opening of the Spaceport America Visitor Center in the middle of the Hot Springs Historic District. The Visitor Center needs to remain in downtown DRC. We have an excellent staff of volunteers who welcome people and answer their questions. We received many compliments on the facility, the cleanliness, especially of the public restrooms, and I thank the city staff for that. The unique shops and boutiques downtown and the galleries, they comment on how friendly everyone has been to them and plan to return to see and do more in the area. And I'm leaving a copy of all of this for you. Hopefully...
Thank you. Hans?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Hans Townsend. I'm speaking first, Chamber. I'm speaking second.
Hans, can I get you to give your address, please?
Sorry, I have two addresses.
Okay.
Chamber is 207 South Folch.
Thank you.
And private address is Desert View Inn 906, not date.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I could go on for 30 minutes. Things that are happening around here that are not very acceptable as far as transparency, as far as communication. And I'm going to start with the Chamber. On Tuesday, which was yesterday, the Chamber arranged a talk with a national company that have visited us twice before. They've been checking our property and they're proposing to bring 40 to 50 jobs to this town. This was our third visit with this company, and previous visits, we've been unable to get anybody from the city, except George came along when I grabbed him at his home address and dragged him in because he said, "If nobody else comes, I'll sit there." This was important. These people are just about committed. They are negotiating for the property. They've gone deeply in with the economic development of the state who came to the meetings. And to have to chase the city around to get the city manager to even speak to you is not acceptable. We have phone calls in that we never get returned, and that doesn't make for anything working in a usable manner. It's not, especially when it's something that's going to benefit the city to such an extent. And so, we need to find a different way of communication, and we need to find a way that we will get our questions answered. Emails and phone calls don't get returned. That's not acceptable. And the Chamber works hard on economic development, although nobody seems to see it. But this one will show you that we get results. The other side of the story is that I know the city is working hard on infrastructure, and it's going to cost a lot of money, and it's vital infrastructure, the water, the waste, the roads, and electrical. This is my opinion now. But we throw money away all the time. We throw money away. We've got a long list of where we've thrown money away. We don't look at something before we do it, and the money disappears. We've got a pool roof that is useless after five years, and the amount of money we spend on that, engineering studies, and everything else. It's not the right way, and we're throwing money away on smart meters. If we've got $1 million, put it into the vital things we need. Let's get those done before we start looking at philanthropic things. The park renovation, we don't need a park renovation. It's for the public, not for spending money on. And the way it's been done, I can't even get an estimate of the price. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners and Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Gary Woodcock, 312 North Folch. I want to speak in favor of a moratorium on the smart meters. We receive our bill, and I think the utility company knows where we live. In the bill, there has never been any indication at all of any smart meter activity. Did a little bit of research, and I was kind of appalled at what I found going on, not just here, but in other parts of the country. In British Columbia, it's interesting, they have 44 communities that have moratoriums on this very smart meter business. And I knew of a family that lives here that will be leaving if these are implemented. So, I don't know how many people you'd like to see leave the community because of this, but I promise you, that will be happening. So, let's take some time and look over all of the issues surrounding this smart meter implementation because it's happening all over the world. There's a lot of big money behind it. It's a billion-plus-dollar business, and we don't need to have that experiment happen here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodcock. Ron?
Good morning, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. Ron Pecore, 603 Riverside. I wasn't going to speak, but I would like to know where all these people were five years ago when we started this discussion about these meters. YESCO came in, gave us a thing of $20 million to put one in, and we've been talking about this for five years. So, all of a sudden, there's a lot of naysayers. Where were they? And the other thing is, as far as I know, next year, the Department of Transportation is going to input in two roundabouts at New School Road and Smith Avenue by the moose. Wait until construction starts, and all the mayor going, "What's going on? Why aren't we paying attention to what's going on in our community?" That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Ron. Is there any further public comment at this time? Any further public comment? Hearing none, we will move on to our next item on the agenda, which is response to public comment. Do I have any response to public comment? I'm going to start. I'm going to start this time. Hans, you know, it's really disheartening that you come up to the podium and say you have a hard time reaching anybody from the city. You know, I may not answer my telephone, but I always get back to you. And I got in touch with the manager, and we were able to get to your meeting. I was unable to get there. The manager was there, and he gave 100% representation from the city. And so, for you to get up here and hound him like that, that is totally unfair. Now, I think if you were to take some time and come down and visit him, he would visit with you, and I know that.
No.
And so, thank you. Thank you, Hans. But, again, we're just responding. No, Hans, we're just responding at this time. You're not here to talk and answer, okay? And so, I'm really upset with that, that you would say that, and that's all I have to say. Anybody else have response?
Okay. I would like to respond to Ms. Doctory's comment, and I say I do agree with you on the issue of climate change is a very drastic one, and we really need to be moving forward with renewable energy as much as possible. But I want to give you a little history on ordinance 664. When that was passed, we were limited by the contract that we have with Sierra Electric The contract we have with them says that outside of the energy that we get from WAPA, that Sierra Electric is our sole, is by contract, the sole person we can purchase electricity from. Now, there was a clause that was put into that contract which allowed the city to purchase energy from renewable sources, but not in a quantity beyond what the city can use for its municipal buildings and municipal facilities. That puts a limit on what we can do, and actually, if they wanted to get picky about it, they could say that reimbursing people for power from residential facilities is outside of that contract. But we have been able to get away with that. And in order to keep from getting into legal jeopardy with Sierra Electric, we had to put that 90% cap on there because otherwise, people can go in, build a system twice what they need, and then we would be buying electricity back. And it's not because we wanted to limit how much they could put on. It was a legal constraint put on us by the contract with Sierra Electric. And I would personally like to see that change in the contract we have with Sierra Electric, but at this time, we are stuck with the contract as it was negotiated. But I do agree with you that we really need to be looking at renewables as much as possible. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further response to public comment?
Yeah, just a couple really quick things. I agree with Commissioner Segetti, and I also believe you, Ms. Doctory. I think that, I wish we could have gotten out of that problem with Sierra Electric. We talked about it in this meeting when we had to update that contract with them and ask them if we could do the renewable energy, and it was an absolute no. In order to get the contract renewed with them and lower the rates that they were going to charge, which would have been passed on to the public. I would love to see us look at that again, if there's any way that we can do that in the future. And, Mr. Finn, I happen to agree with you on the at-large voting. I think that that would be something that would be worthwhile looking at in our community because this pitting one person against another and having the different seats, I think that at-large would, in fact, bring more people out, and it might be more fair. But that's just my personal opinion. But I think, Mayor, that might be something...
I like that idea too. I thought that was a great idea.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh huh. Thank you. Any further response to public comment at this time? Manager Madrid, nothing?
No. Mayor, I'm going to cover the meeting with American Organics later in my report.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. At this time, we will move on. The next item on our agenda this morning is Item E, Consent Calendar. The consent calendar consists of E1, City Commission Regular Minutes, November 11, 2019; E2, Acknowledged Golf Course Advisory Board Minutes for October 2, 2019, and November 4, 2019; E3, Acknowledged Public Utility Advisory Board Minutes for September 16, 2019; E4, Subrecipient Funding, First Quarter Reports; E5, Lodger's Tax Funding, First Quarter Reports; and E6, Accounts Payable for November 2019. Do I have a motion to approve as noted, or are there anything that we need to discuss separately?
Mayor, I have a couple of questions for the manager.
Okay.
I'm looking at subrecipient funding and lodger's tax funding, and I see on subrecipient that there was one late report, and then one non-report in lodger's tax. There was another late report. Is there an issue within your post?
Not an ongoing issue, sir. There was an issue, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So, do I have a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I would like to approve the consent calendar as you listed.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar as noted. Are there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this morning are public hearings. F1, Public Hearing Discussion Action Final Adoption of Ordinance Number 710, Amending Section 112-2-2D and F of the Code of Ordinances related to the reducing the number of members to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Manager Madrid.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is the final adoption of the ordinance that is designed to reduce the number of members from five to three on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I believe this calls for a public hearing, Mayor.
Okay.
Jay?
I might also add that, so I'll give this opportunity to clean up on paragraph F, that we would require all of the members of the commission be questioned.
Okay. So, I will now open the public hearing, and I have, I do not have any proponents listed, but I do have three opponents. We will have five minutes, correct, Jay?
Yes.
To respond?
Yes.
Okay, and the first one is Jack Noel.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. I'm Jack Noel, 650 Folch Street, and I'd like to respond to this in a couple of ways. One, I'd like to give my personal story, my personal history, the experience that I've had as a community member and as a volunteer. I'm an old guy, I'm 76. Muhammad Ali once said that "The rent for being here is to serve the public." I write a column for the newspaper, been doing it for two years on city health. If I can help one person, that's great. I don't get paid for it because it's time for me to give back to my community. So, I looked around, and I said, "Where's the best place?" I like to read. I looked at the library, and I talked to people in town who experienced the same frustration that I did with the library, that on holiday weekends, they close early, they're closed for a long time, and it's just really inconvenient for the people in this community who pay taxes to have the library going. And I'd like to open with saying that I have an incredible amount of respect for our librarian, Pat Alhanna. She's done a magnificent job over the last 23 years, and like all things, they must come to an end. New blood needs to come in, and we need to move forward. So, I volunteered. I signed the sheet. I was accepted by our Commissioners to be on the board, and I showed up, and I went there, and I'm the new kid on the block, and everybody sort of looks at me sideways, and that's fine. And it immediately became clear that I was being perceived as a challenge to the authority, not as a person to contribute. And we went along, and we talked, and I was told very succinctly that she doesn't work for the people, she works for the city.
Excuse me, Mr. Noel.
Yes.
Are we talking about the library, or are we talking? Our subject here today is planning and zoning, so...
Right, but there's a bigger issue here, Sandy.
Okay.
And the bigger issue is that there seems to be a real divide between the community and the government in the community. And the question, I believe, is what happened to the P&amp;Z Committee, and why are people not volunteering? And my perception is that people are not volunteering because, one, you hit a wall when you join these because there is a mindset of we run things, and you just shut up and serve your purpose. The example that I'm giving is my experience on the library, but I see it throughout this community, and I wonder why. For instance, when Third Street was in construction and the pipes were laid, the workers had an opportunity to put the barriers right on the other side of the bridge so people could use Third Street to go to the library. And they were put in front of the bridge, and I would go in, and I'd talk to them, and they'd go, "Yeah, you're right." But there's not a cultural perception of that the city is here for the benefit of the community who pays the taxes. My experience with the library board, I believe, exemplifies what other people experience in this town, and we should be reaching out to bring them into the discussion, just like the smart meter discussion. Why didn't people know? Because there are lots of ideas, but when they start signing contracts and things become real, people stand up. And that's why there's always this conflict between us and them, the newcomers and the oldcomers, the old-timers and the new-timers. And we're going into a period of time where we're all going to have to work together to solve the problems of going forward. Fiber optics, we should be talking about fiber optics to attract people. I spent some time with the people who want to put the business in here in town. I spent some time with the people who want to put the business in here in town. These are the kind of things that the community, we have retired engineers who can contribute. But I don't see any sort of openness. In fact, when you cut our public comment time from three minutes, or from six minutes to three minutes, and then we're told to, well, you can talk to our city manager. I talked to the city manager about my problems with the library board. He threw me under the bus. It's, and I just, and I filled out my resignation, and I sent it in. He acknowledged that there were problems, and nobody wants to address those real problems. The library could be an incredible resource for this town. And it is. It's a wonderful place, but it's very limited. So with that, I will shut up, and I just feel that our, where we should be going is to change the culture, to openness and friendliness. And every one of you knows something I don't. And every one of you is a friend that I haven't met yet. And that's the kind of compassion and...
Thank you, Mr. Noel. Ms. Ariel?
Good morning again. Like your own commission consisting of five members, it is unwise to move to reduce by ordinance the numbers of the members of the Planning and Zoning Board. In the most simple of procedures, an appointment of three members can operate the P&amp;Z with two vacancies, as I'm sure actually has happened with some committee already in the past. Rules for quorums would apply, i.e. that three members be present to establish a quorum. I think this broader, comprehensive view of the P&amp;Z, or really any of our advisory boards, makes any ordinance change like this is proposed by 710 completely unnecessary. The larger issue, as Jack Noel was trying to describe, is whether your body, the City of Truth or Consequences Commission, and the staff want to abide by considerable opinions and recommendations that might be forthcoming from a future P&amp;Z. You might remember and consider that the prior P&amp;Z quit Omaz because its decisions were ignored and frequently overridden by your body. Volunteer citizen consideration and action on behalf of the community demand time, some study, expertise, and finally deliberation. If, as Amin Doughty commented at the last commission meeting, that we have many talents and expertise in our community, and we desire a collaboration among those experiences, then you all, as Commissioners and civic administrators, might consider stepping back a bit and allowing a wider, more varied series of perspectives to shape public policy in our community. The short is, I oppose the proposed ordinance of 710. The desired effect is already available within the existing ordinance, Government, Planning, and Zoning Committee. I would be glad to answer any questions any of you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Fen.
Good morning, Commissioners. Speaking on this ordinance, I obviously am in opposition to it. Having had, having been appointed to the Planning and Zoning Board a number of years ago, and then having the city hold a special meeting to unappoint me because of opposition in the community from realtors or contractors or whatever, why is that? If this, if this commission is so unimportant that we can make it the smallest commission in our city, then what are we, what are we doing? Every time that this board makes a decision on a planning and zoning issue that has come before them since 2013, has violated the laws of our own community. If we violate the laws of our own community, why should we expect our residents and anyone else to think that there's any value in our laws? This was established a long time ago, for many, many years, there were five members on this Planning and Zoning Commission. There was a great deal of work that goes on, and they meet once a month, but they deal with issues by going out and visiting the locations. Has any of the Commissioners gone out and looked at planning and zoning areas that they've made decisions in? I doubt it very seriously. You don't have the time. And I understand that, which is why the planning and zoning is so important. The things that go on in this town that are handed out, variances that are handed out like candy, change the community. And to bring them back into compliance or into some semblance of order becomes impossible. You can't just hand out variances because I like Joe over here, and he wants this, or he wants that. Today's other public hearing on this, on this issue is a prime example of it. You cannot appoint a single individual, say you're the zoning administrator, no matter how good you are, you cannot do the work of five people. And it takes the work of five people to go through all of the issues, the legal issues, the ramification issues and everything, to make a decision for the planning of our town. This is not going to happen with three people. But I can understand that it's much easier, because we can just appoint two of our buddies to be the majority, and then we'll let somebody else be the third member, and who cares what he has to say? But we'll get everything done the way it, the way we want it to get done. This is, this is the trap with lowering the number of people on that Planning and Zoning Board. And I happen to know that at least three of us had applied many months ago, and never heard a word from the city about being interviewed for the Planning and Zoning Board. So are we going to be the three? You don't want me, do you? And yet, I would probably be the best bet that you have for the city's future. But I'm saying, right now, this is the most important board, it is a quasi-judicial board, it has sworn members that have to take an oath. No other board in this commission or in this city has to do that. That's where it's so important. And to reduce it, to demean it, and then to ignore the findings and the recommendations of that board who do all of this work, which is the reason why they quit. And you can't do that. You have to say, okay, we are putting you on here, and we will accept your recommendations, and we won't override it because, well, Joe is involved, or Dave, or Sally, or whatever, and they're friends of ours. You can't make decisions like that. Don't pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Do we have any response to the three opponents that spoke? Manager Madrid?
No, ma'am.
Commissioners? Thank you. Now we will move on to the next item on our agenda this morning, which is Item F2. I will, excuse me, I will close this public hearing and open the next public hearing. The next one is F2, Public Hearing Discussion Action, Request for a Plot Amendment to amend the property line at 825 Van Patten, Truth or Consequences, New Mexico, pursuant to Chapter 15, Section 1517. Manager Madrid?
Mayor, I think we need to vote on the last item.
Oh. Oh, excuse me, I, okay. I forget that we had it, action. Okay. All right. So do I have a motion to, for final approval of adoption of ordinance number 710, amending Section 11-2-2D and F of the Code of Ordinances related to reducing the number of members to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission? Do I have a motion to approve?
Mayor, can we have some further discussion first?
Sure.
Okay. Go ahead. I kind of agree with Mr. Fen and Ms. Doughty, some three. If we can't even find three people, we can't even find three people. So, you know, at least with five people on the board, if we find, if three come to work that day, or decide to show up on the board, we can go ahead and conduct business. With three people, you have to have 100 percent participation all the time in order to get it to pass. And it's an awful lot of work for just three people. I'm kind of of the opinion, right now, that we should kind of keep it as it is, and see if we can't find at least three people to serve. At least then we can have the community go forward, they can at least make decisions. We have a quorum with three people, and we can move forward. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I have two concerns also, and I've been on board, and I do agree with some of the things that we're hearing from these people in the audience. And my concern is also yours, too. You know, if we did get more people, and we could go up to a five-person board, you've got that much more input, even though I like the three-person, because we've had so much difficulty getting people to put their names in. But the other thing that came up that concerns me, that I heard from Mr. Fen, is that three people have put in applications quite a while ago. And if that's the case, was it prior to us having this conversation about redoing ordinance 710, or was it after? Do I have any answer to that?
I'm sure it was prior, Commissioner, because I haven't seen any of these applications.
Well, that being said, if it was prior to us having this discussion, and there were three applications put in, I don't understand why that didn't come in front of us to determine whether we wanted to appoint those people onto the board. So I'm kind of agreeing with you, Commissioner Heschler, that maybe we ought to just, if we've got a couple of applications for the P&amp;Z board, maybe we should be looking at those applications, not looking at the ordinance to restructure it. It's, I'm just making comments here, but...
Yeah, correct.
So then...
I'd like to add, and we kind of had this discussion at the last meeting. You know, the idea was, you know, by lowering it, by, you know, reducing the number of people we have to have there. But if we're still requiring three people to be present, that doesn't change anything from the way it is now. So if we have to have three people to have a quorum and to make decisions, then it really doesn't make sense to change the membership.
It's the same, still.
We're not, we're not making any, any changes that would affect the way the board operates. So, because then if we have more people come in, then we would have to go back and change it to allow us to have more members, and why not just leave it the way it is?
So theoretically, if we had seven applications, and only three people looked like they would be good on that board, we could pick three, that we would still have a five-person board available, and a couple more applications came in that looked like they would be good P&amp;Z people?
That's correct.
Then I would make a motion that we leave it as it is.
Right. It does take in the ordinance that three, three members have to be present, right?
Yes, it does. It does. I think really, yeah. I would agree with that, Dad, because you didn't want to have a three-person board that only two people show up, and it was kind of difficult to have really a discussion, you know, and especially in your current situation, where you may have one person in favor of something, the other person's against something, so that's why we, that's why we said, you know, you had to have multiple people show up.
Okay. So I have a motion that we just leave it as... Denied? Denied. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is F2, Public Hearings, Public Hearing Discussion Action, Resolution for a Plot Amendment to amend the property line at 825 Van Patten, Truth or Consequences, New Mexico, pursuant to Chapter 15, Section 1517. City Manager Madrid.
Tracy?
Morning, Mayor, Mayor Procam, Commissioners. In your agenda, you have a request for a plot amendment at 825 Van Patten. Your applicant is Shane and Ruth Shannon, and they've designated their representative as Nate Stevens, who is here to speak as well. All required documentation has been submitted, all fees have been paid, taxes are verified as current, public hearing notices were posted, certified mailings were sent out, and all but two were signed for. The applicant is requesting to amend the property between 825 and 845 Van Patten, and the section of the city property that's also adjacent to the applicant. Renee's bringing the map up. As you can see on the map provided, property lines are at an angle. The applicant is requested to kind of do a straightening of the property lines on both sides of 825 Van Patten, which would in essence swap triangular sections of property within there, both of the 845 side as well as the city side of 825. I do have a letter of support, and also via phone conversation with the properties owners at 845, they do support this change, they were unable to attend. The swapping corners of the city property doesn't interfere with the drainage ditch there that's kind of labeled as Mick Elbury, but it's actually a drainage ditch in that area. The request for this is, as you can see, the structure at 825 is technically built on the corner there of the 845, and then the fence line, which is, I believe, a cement wall, is along the city section on the other corner there. In order for them to proceed with any type of a bank finance sale of this property, it would have to be amended. And I stand for questions, and like I said, the representative Nate Stevens is also here.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the commission?
A lot. You know, it looks to me, if you straighten that line, that Baxter's going to lose some of their property and not gain as much back on the other triangle. That's what it kind of looks like to me, I'm not sure if that's true. I also believe that if fences have been up for 10 years, and you can correct me, Attorney Rubin, if I'm incorrect, if they've been up for 10 years, that becomes kind of a quasi property line? And so it's an understood line? Is that not correct? How does that work?
There's a, you're thinking it's called the doctrine of acquiescence. It's a procedure, it's actually established through the court system, where if someone, if you have two property owners, you know, prestigious properties, and a fence has been there for 10 years, it will work, then one of the property owners can petition the court to make a determination that they're asking the court to determine the doubt. Fence now becomes the actual property line and not what the plaque is showing. So, but again, that's, it has to be done by the court system.
Thank you. And because the Backsters are affected by this directly, I have a difficult time without knowing a little bit more by going ahead and making an adjustment like this. And as much as I understand, it would be nice to have straight lines on a property, because I have some properties that are triangle, and it's not really a lot of fun. But I heard what Baxter, what Baxter and Sherry came up and said, and because I have a lot of respect for those people also, I would like to have a little more research worked done on this than just to be thrown at the last minute to us. That's my comment.
Well, I mean, they can, they have a separate public hearing, so, you know, we can still hear from everybody, and then, and then we can have the...
So you don't need to make a decision on this today?
Not necessarily. You can hear the public, you can hear the, what the public, what the public comments are, and then you decide, if you have enough information for it, the commission can decide to postpone it for further, for further reviews.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any further comments from the commission?
I'm only just thinking, before we have it on the agenda, the public hearing, people were actively advertising, people showing up, pursuing it, adding it to the public hearing.
And we will.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
Okay. I mean, I think we should let, you know, let any, any...
And I will, I was just asking if there's any comments from the commission, any further comments from the commission at this time?
I'm not...
Okay.
We can wait until we hear from the public.
Okay. Thank you. Nate?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, everybody. First of all, it's not my intention at all to steal property, or to take property, or to affect Baxter or Sherry in any way. The only reason that we're trying to change this is Shane Shannon, who's my father-in-law, we're trying to purchase the home from him. We currently reside in the home at 825 Van Patten. Whenever we, I moved in there, whenever my wife moved in there, she's been there eight years, the fence lines were, as you see on the map, they were... see on the map, they were, they were there. We were trying to finance the home, um, and part of the financing process was to get a survey. So over the last, however long, forty years, or whenever the first original fence was put up between neighbors, they probably just decided, let's put the fence right here. When we got the survey, that, um, this is what it showed, that the property line clips the neighbor's front porch, clips our back wall, and the property line on the other side completely dissolves the driveway, uh, the retaining wall that was put in there, um, and the new fence that we started putting up. So in the process of putting up the new fence along where the old fence was, um, the survey came in. So I've halted, you know, putting up the new fence, obviously, until we figure out what's going on. Our, our plot amendment doesn't affect the back line, which I believe is, is, uh, Baxter and Sherry's property, is the ditch. So in the back of the property, it is, it is not to move the property line on the back of the property at all. It's simply to straighten out the two side lot lines because the bank will not loan on the property next door or on our property. And the people next door are wanting to list their property, uh, and they're both completely, uh, unlistable. They're un, you cannot attain, uh, loan on either property because of those lot lines. So that is our reason for wanting to change it. And basically, um, we are trying to just trade that, you can see the triangle where the lot line is and where the fence is, we're trying to straighten that and trade basically the neighbor's, their triangle for our triangle. And then the same thing with the city, the triangle for the triangle. Um, and it's just an awkward way that it was put in there, and I'm sure that nobody ever had a survey done in, you know, a long, long time until we tried to purchase the property.
Thank you, Nate.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, at this time, um, on item F2, I have, um, two opponents. I do not have any proponents, but I have two opponents. Ron Fen.
Yes, uh, good morning, Commissioners. Ron Fen, three sixteen North Foche. Uh, this is, the reason I'm opposing this, uh, for one, is from what we spoke about a few minutes ago. We need a planning and zoning board. And this is exactly the kind of issue that is handled by a planning and zoning board. It's a great deal more than just, well, it's convenient, or it's, you know, I'm sorry, I didn't, uh, when I bought the property and I put my house on it, it just kind of fell into the public land and, well, eventually we'll just take it. Now, this is the kind of thing that communities either abide by a set of rules. Um, the, um, these plats were made some time ago, but, um, the land is, what happened, they're saying that it's not straight. It is straight. All those lines are very straight. It's parallelogram. It is not a rectangle, because a rectangle wouldn't work, because the street is at an angle to the property. So you can't say, well, we want to straighten it out. Um, this involves the taking of public land. And that cannot be done by an administrator. That cannot be done by you legally. This has to be done, first of all, by a planning and zoning board. Um, I don't see a swapping of any land for the city land. Excuse me, but, uh, no, there's no, uh, there's no city, uh, value being gotten out of here. So what is the value of that land? How much are, how much is it worth for the city to, number one, have to condemn that land because it's public land? It's not city land. It's not, doesn't belong. It's not deeded to the city. It's public land. And therefore, it would have to be condemned, have to go through a condemnation process in order to legally give this party that triangle of land, uh, in, by that drainage ditch. Oh, uh, the fact that somebody built a fence on it does not make it legal, never did make it legal. The fact that our code compliance people never check things like this and say, hey, fellow, you know, you can't put a fence on here, uh, without a permit, number one. And if you were going to put a permit, if you're going to pull a permit, you better make sure that it's on your property. I can tell you that right now, that, um, code compliance needs to start looking up at Ivy Street, because on Ivy, there are property owners now that are putting fences on the curb and enclosing in their property, uh, city easement that is not their boundary line. You can't put a fence wherever you want a fence. And this goes on many, many times in this city. And we're going to lose, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna make a mess of this community if we just keep on, uh, saying, well, yeah, this is, this is sorry, sorry, Charlie, but, you know, this is the problem. You cannot just hand out property that doesn't belong to you without following the proper procedures. And none of these procedures are in your bailiwick until after planning and zoning has gone through it. So I'm recommending that unless the earth is going to shift, if this doesn't happen today, that you postpone this until after a planning and zoning board is reestablished, and they look into this as their number-one process. Otherwise, you're, you're doing something that is illegal. And somebody could, um, bring this before a court, and you could be responsible for it. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. Hans Townsend.
Um, Madam Mayor, City Commissioners, Hans Townsend, nine oh six North Dayton, Chairman of Commerce. Uh, I actually thought I was signing for the other public thing, the P and Z, but they both interact with each other, so I'll use that time for the same thing. Um, I'm going back to getting response. When I was on the board, on the, um, Lodger's Tax Board, we all decided we weren't going to continue because we didn't get response from the city. Our meetings were canceled.
Hans, excuse me, though, but we're speaking here on this ordinance.
And I'm going to PLC, but I'm showing you what's happening that makes a difference to the people that worked for you on PLC, where this wouldn't occur, because you would have a board, but they walk away. We really need to establish some communication. You talk about our meeting yesterday. That was the third meeting. The other two meetings I didn't get an answer to. This is the kind of response we need from you. We can't work with you if you don't work with us. And that goes for PLC, it goes for everything else as well. You have a lot of people here that want to com, commit their time, that want to offer to do things, and people with a lot of knowledge.
Yes, ma'am, I know that, yes.
And, and that makes a big difference.
Hans, again, we're, we're speaking on this platform.
That's all right. That's all right. That's what I mean. It's very hard to talk to you.
Thank you.
Because we don't get answers when we ask for them.
Thank you.
Six months we waited.
Baxter.
Yes, I'm sorry to see all this going on. I thought you guys... Uh, that, i- if you look, or if I could go over there and just point, I could show you...
There's a pointer right there. If you...
Right here?
Right there. Yes, sir.
How do I do that?
They supposed to tell, uh, how to use...
No, I don't know.
Renee, can you go show him how to use that, please?
If you hold down this button, it'll give you a green thing, but it's better than the one.
Oh, this one here. Okay, I love it. I love it. Okay, where this is now, I know that's wrong. You know, Loftus has told me that a hundred times. Every time he's doing something wrong, you got, he told me I stole half a lot there. Well, but then, right down this straight line is the wash, okay, like this? That's the wash. And up here is, is where, oh, we got a piece sticking out, I'm sorry, on this one here. There, there's a piece sticking out. I don't know. It doesn't truly show it there, see? But a- anyway, it's like our, uh, it's like our, our clothesline, we'll just say, comes to here, okay? And that, right in here. And, and that's where, where this is right here for a, a property line. But then, this property here, because I told you there was two pieces of property, and she gained this from Woody. She, he used to keep all his cars and stuff in there. And, and this line goes out. If you, if you want this point here, it's right here where the airplane needs to be, what I, what I'm explaining. That's the property line from this second piece of property was through here. See, she even had her house a little bit of, oh, these were apartments. She had them, uh, at one time in with Woody. He was using the gate here to park all his cars in this area. But the property line, really, if, if I put a fence in, would be from here, just, uh, the stake's still there, right close to his building, uptight to his walls. And it goes right straight behind these houses, and it cuts a little bit off the corner of this building here. And it used to go through the VFW out to this line. And that goes into the parking lot of the county building. So I kept the line back here. I kept it back here, so it wasn't in this wash through here, see? Going all the way up. And, anyway, if I move my fence, I'd find to move that few feet. I don't know what they're going to do with that piece of property, or I'll buy it. I'll buy it from whoever buys it, or from the county. I'll buy this little piece here, so the fence is still straight, like here. But when it gets here, the fence moves out into here, see? To this straight line. If I wanted to put a fence there, and there's no fence there, I left it open, so we can go up and down and clean this ditch. I clean it usually every other time, and I have Patrick Hill come in and it costs me two hundred dollars. And then, when the county comes in, or city, whoever it is, city comes in, gives my shaking hands. I'm just not used to this. And when the county comes in, they clean that, you know? And, oh, they go all the way up down, they clear up to here, they clean this, this ditch is here. But then, I left the fence out there. So like I say, this property line was from Woody's property. If you look, when, when she put them together because of this apartment here, she used to have eleven little cottages in here. But anyway, uh, that was sixty years ago, or fifty years ago. It could go clear out to here, catch the end of this building. It cuts this building right off here. It cuts the corner of that building off. That, that building's on my property and Sherry's property. It goes out into the parking lot where the plane used to be there on the county building. And then it cuts across, and then, then it's this, it's on, it's on this same line here that we have to change for that ten, fifteen feet, whatever it is. So that's, that just explains what it is. But there's no fence over there behind, this isn't a fence. This is a stick, uh, there's...
Baxter, we're going to switch it to a, a different picture.
Sure. Oh, that's fine.
Pictures are pretty bad.
Okay, that don't quite show what I'm talking about. Oh, that just would.
That'd be better.
Yeah, kind of, but you can't, it's, it's kind of, right where I'm talking is here. Well, you used to have the shipping coop, but it goes out. It goes across right in here by these cars. You know? Or, I could say where that jet plane used to be. It's off the coast of that. Remember, guys, that's back, I don't know, was back in here someplace. This was all parking lot then, of course. And then you had the VFW here and everything else, but...
Right.
On the VF, yeah, VFW. I, oh, there's a line right there. Is that it? Okay. Well, see, our stake is there. It's in the corner there somewhere. And then it goes up, you can't see their buildings now. So you're in the parking lot. Come on down a little. Still don't show the building. And maybe it does. There's a line, see? That that might be a line. See, even this back fence is way inside. I mean, it, it isn't fenced up to the end of it.
All right.
And, and I know one day a state cop seen Sherry throw something over the fence, and he stopped and told her. You know, he said, what are you doing? Throwing garbage away. She said, which way? That's all. You know, you got land on whole side of the fence, so...
Right.
That's the way that is.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baxter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Tracy?
I'd like to request one appropriate for Nate to come back up and explain where those property lines are, because I think there's a little bit of confusion.
Please, thank you. Manager Madrid.
Mayor, Commissioners, before we go on, uh, I'd like to propose an approach to this whole item. Uh, first of all, where were you forty years ago? I was middle school. They used to call junior high. This, this is something, uh, that was created, that looks like it needs a remedy. And I'm sure glad that we only have one attorney that we depend on, because we have so many legal opinions. Here's the, what I see as, uh, the basic, uh, things that need to be addressed. Uh, first of all, I, I completely disagree that this requires a planning and zoning commission. You were all duly elected to make these decisions and to serve the public, and to do that would create another obstacle for these, uh, residents. It should be the goal of government to serve the people, not to create more roadblocks in something as simple as this. And I say simple because in, in a, a basic, uh, item like this, we're talking about redrawing a boundary. Now, does one party or another get enriched unjustly? If the answer is yes, we have an issue here. If the answer is no, then, uh, that makes it a lot simpler. If there is, uh, some type of undue burden that's going to be created, we should recognize that. These are the kind of questions that we should be looking for in the, in the testimony and, and, uh, sides that we're going to hear. And I, I think that makes it pretty basic, and I hope that helps. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have any further questions, comments, concerns? Uh...
May I, yeah?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Um, like the city manager said, uh, these buildings were put in sixty...
Forty.
Forty, forty years ago, yeah.
The, the house has been there since the forty...
Right. And obviously, when these buildings were put in, they, uh, the plats were not surveyed out, and, uh, they were not constructed the way, you know, with, within the bounds of the properties as they, and it is something that needs to be corrected. And, uh, moving the buildings is, is not an option. And, you know, again, changing the plat boundaries is, is the simple and straightforward way to remedy this. Um, but what I would like to see, and I, I know they're talking about exchanges of properties, uh, we really need to know, you know, on these little triangles, how much area is being exchanged between the two properties. Uh, we need to know, make sure that the property owners on either side are, are happy with that. Uh, in the case where the two, the two private properties, that's a matter of discussion between those two property owners. On the other side, where we're talking about city property, we need to, again, make sure, again, we have that, you know, to the, whatever fraction of a square foot the law requires. And we need to make sure that is all done through, through due process. Um, and I'm sure if we dig around in the city, we are going to find other situations where, where this kind of thing does occur. Uh, there was one property we were looking at, um, when we first moved out here, where there was a significant encroachment from another, from another property. So these things do occur, and it is up to us to, to get it corrected. And, uh, I, I am actually familiar with that property, and I, and there has been so much improvement done on that property over the past, what was it, about six, six years ago. I really want to, uh, congratulate the owners on what they have done and how they have improved that property. But, and I think when we, uh, we make a decision on this, we need to, we need to remember, you know, uh, people who take care of their property, who make improvements and can make investments on their... people who take care of their property, who make improvements and can make investments on their property. We need to have that, take that into consideration when we make these decisions as well. Like I said, I think we need to go in, get a little more data on this, see that exactly what's going on. And particularly on the side where we're bounding with the city, make sure that all of that has been done and is being done legally. Like I said, I'm not opposed to this. I just want to make sure we have all of the details and have all the information that we need.
Thank you. Do I have any further questions?
Yeah, I just want to say that I think Tracy has everything that we're going to be asking for. And I know she's dying to tell us, and I'm sure she's got everything in the file.
I think it's really important for Nate to take the time to explain the property boundaries. Because I think that the previous explanation is incorrect. And I'd like to give Nate time to really differentiate for the commission so you can see.
Let me ask one.
In adjacent to the other.
Let me ask one question, though. Is this a time-sensitive issue? Is this something that if we don't make a decision right now? Because I kind of get the impression that we're not all real comfortable. Even though I know that Tracy's probably done and has done a fabulous job at what she does. But we all seem to kind of have these questions back there about the previous property owners and about the new property owners and about splitting up the property and making it straight. And it all sounds wonderful, but we want to make sure what we do and when we make a decision, that it's the right decision and we don't create any havoc for the future property owners. And so again, that's my question. And then I'm going to let Commissioner Clark ask her questions, and then we'll let Nate speak.
I think part of what he'll have to say will help clarify that it will not be affecting the other speakers. I think that they're turned around and they're looking at the property incorrectly.
Okay.
And I'll let Nate speak on the time-sensitive issue.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and let Commissioner Clark.
I just want to say I agree with Commissioner Shigetti about the parties of the properties agreeing. And then bring that into us, I would love to see that. And I'm sorry that the banks won't take this, I think it's absurd. But I want to tell you a really quick story. In 1998, I got a condemnation notice from the state of New Mexico DOT. They wanted 11 inches of my motel building. And I had 10 days to take it down. So that being said, it was right on Broadway. Those people would not want to be in that bedroom if it was wide open to Broadway. So it took me weeks and weeks and weeks to research the issue. What I found is that the current surveys had better lines because they're using satellite or whatever it is they're using. I found a survey from 1972 that proved that my property line, my building was inside the property line at that particular point. When I provided that 1972 survey, which was done by hand at the time, and people would step it off, the DOT backed off, and my building is still intact. So that being said, we don't know if these current lines actually were part of the 1940 lines. And I've got a 1938 survey for my building also, which I would question whether today's ability to survey would actually back up that 1938 survey. So that's some of the question. I just wanted to bring that story out, that I was able to provide something that salvaged my building because you have to honor the surveys that had it existed in prior years. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. You're welcome. Nate?
Okay, so first of all, let's like give a little background. So my parents own the Ace Lodge in the Trail Motel. I own AGNS Construction. I'm very much invested in the town and its growth and the ability of us to move forward as a community. We just built a home, a brand-new home on 714 Van Patten. I have an investor who is willing to build new homes and do things in the community to turn the downtown around. So that's where I stand and where I am as far as the community. I don't, I'm not just in this for myself. We're trying to do an overall communal, you know, improvements. So, let's see if I can figure this thing out here.
Green button, the chart button.
Okay, so this right here, if you go back, and I have been to the archives of the county and searched for an older survey on this property, but there's not one that's been registered with the county. So this right here is the drainage ditch. If you go back to 1940s, whenever this was all plotted out, it was plotted out to be McAdoo Street. Obviously, I think Jeff Richter was on the board at the time or on the commission at the time whenever they did all this drainage. And what that drainage ditch did whenever the city took over McAdoo Street is it allowed for all of these people in that community to be outside of the flood zone. So it pushed the flood zone way farther back onto Wyona is where the, you know, on the other side. So it saves all these people on this side from having to pay for flood insurance. Is what that ditch right there did. McElroy. Or maybe it's McElroy. So, and then this right here is the fence line. This is obviously an older satellite picture, and that fence line has been up there for a long time. This back here is Baxter and Sherry's property. And I believe that red line is their property line. So we're not asking to amend or do anything to that property line right there. This is Sherry and Baxter's property over here. It's on Mar and Broadway. It starts at Broadway and it goes down Mar all the way almost to the ditch. So right here in between the proposed property line that we want, what we're trying to get, and the fence that protects anybody from falling into the ditch, there'll be left a space of nine foot nine inches. And back here on the back of the lot, it's 24 foot nine inches between there and there. So this is a drainage ditch that comes down off of Broadway. And this is the concrete drainage ditch that was put in by the county to save everybody from the flood control. These neighbors right here, which is Tanya and Sarah, we have a letter, which is in the packet that you guys got. They own 855 Van Patten, which is this property exactly next door to us. So the only property that is affected by this change is our property at 825, their property at 855, and the city's property, which is up against the drainage ditch right here. So as far as means of an easement or to access this ditch for cleaning or whatever for equipment, there is still adequate space to get equipment between the city's chain link barrier and our proposed property line. There's not a, we're not closing it off or restricting anybody from being able to pass through this area right here, which I'm sure whenever they did the ditch, it was probably plotted as an easement so that they could always have access to that ditch. The only people that this concerns is, like I said, our property and the neighbor's property. I understand that there's a huge thing with the city and other members of the community about planning and zoning and all of those things. But as someone who's tried to improve the community and investing money into it, the fence alone that we put up is around $5,000. So we're investing a huge amount of money into the property. We've built a brand-new home. We're at $138,000 for that home, is what it's cost us to build it. We're trying to improve the whole area. So to get thrown into the mix with the fight between members of the community and the council, I think that's unfair. You can put up a six-foot fence without a permit. You don't need a permit unless you're going over seven. So, and I'm a GB 98 contractor, so I can attest that you don't need a permit to put up a six-foot fence. It is required that you put it on your property line and that you do give an easement to power companies, gas companies as such. But this does not affect Baxter and Sherry. And I'm more than willing, it doesn't need to be, it doesn't have to be today. We are trying to get it done before the end of the year for the closing on the property. The reason for that is because my wife is self-employed, I'm also self-employed. So I would have to go through the whole process again and redo all of our taxes. We'd have to wait for taxes from 2019 and redo the whole process of the loan. That's the reason why we were trying to get it in here, trying to get done before the first of the year so we can close before the first of the year. Otherwise, we can't even reapply until we do our 2019 taxes. And it doesn't have to happen today. And I'd be more than willing to walk the property lines with Sherry and Baxter to clarify that with them. Because they are butted up through the back of it, just to show them that we are not going to affect them at all.
Thank you, Nate.
All right.
Tracy?
At this time, I have nothing more to add, other than the fact that while Nate is saying it doesn't need to be done today, unfortunately, this is the only commission meeting for December. And with there only being one in November, that's why it came down to crunch time.
Thank you. Do we have any commission, attorney Ruben?
I have something I could clarify here. So the applicant, of course, is 825 Van Patten. And the neighbor to 11, I think Nate said 855 Van Patten, but I'm looking at your little map.
845.
845.
845, yeah.
So what would be proposed here is that the proper 845 Van Patten would lose the upper right-hand corner, upper right-hand rattle. Would they be making it up on the other side or?
Correct. Yes. And I do have a letter from both Tanya Kehoe and Sarah Jones, who are the property owners. I did verify as I spoke with them on the phone as well. And they said that they are in support of the proposed lot line change between the house they own at 845 Van Patten and the neighbor's house at 825 Van Patten. And the change they support is specifically shown on the new boundary plot survey that's done by Jeff Richter a few months ago in his actual fence that is currently positioned between the homes.
So where are they, where were they giving Nate the property at, if they gave up that triangle?
Do you want to come and define that a little better, Nate?
Okay, so you see this line right here? This is the fence line. There was a chain link fence and then some old hog fencing. And the hog fencing is still back here because like I said, I halted construction of the fence because we got this survey. So this is the fence line. And this is a fence line, if you go on the Google Maps, it shows an old RV and a decrepit home and a bunch of trash in the yard. So this is the fence line that has been there since before that Google Maps shot was taken. And the property has been done, it was done in 2011, the remodel was. So that picture predated 2011. This line right here is the survey line. And you can see it splits the back of our home where actually the corner of our home is in the neighbor's yard. And the very tip of their front porch is in our yard. This is the property line. So what we would be doing, and what they agree with, the property owners of this property agree with, is that we put, just keep the property line where the fence is. Because that's already what they're using, it's already what we're using. If I put the fence here, they own a garage that sits about right here. They would not have access to that garage whatsoever if I put a fence on that power line. They would completely kill access to their garage. And the fact is, is that the banks won't loan on either one of these properties. On the other side, the property line is here. This is a retaining wall, a cinder block retaining wall that's been stuck out. And there's a flower bed and whatnot too there. So we park our car literally right here, right now. This is the only parking available on the property because this is all the fence pitched in area right here. So that is the fence line that was in there and has been in there predating that picture also. It was just hog fencing at the time. So unknown to my father-in-law, whenever he was doing the remodel in 2011, he put up a corrugated tin fence right along where that hog fence was. Because we have people walking through and they were just walking right through the yard. You know, and some of the people walking through were not people you want walking through the yard. So he put up a corrugated tin fence. Since then, you know, he's an old rancher, so he used railroad ties and some old metal beams as the corrugated tin fence. We wanted to update and we wanted to go to a nicer fence. So we bought the picket fencing and I started running it here. We got the survey and this is what we found. So what we're trying to do is make the property make more sense. Because if this ends up, you can see there is zero backyard on this property. There is no backyard, zero backyard. There's a little side yard and a little side yard. So with this property line like this, there's absolutely no space, yard space on the property whatsoever. And more than anything, we want to get it done so that the property can be sold, so that it can move on and so that this property can be sold and move on. That's basically, I mean, that's the gist of it right there.
Thank you, Nate. Okay, Manager Madrid, what is your recommendation here?
Tracy, Jay, is there any reason not to proceed?
I would like to recommend that the commission approve the property between the two property owners and approve for the city to proceed with what our steps are, which I would obviously refer to city attorney, whether or not we need to do anything, you know, a surveying or anything of the city and property owner. But at the very least, I feel like we have presented the information regarding the two potential property owners, and it's not affecting the other proposed components on there. That's my recommendation.
Thank you.
You and I can just take a look at this picture together, just to make sure I'm clear on something.
Yeah, and I'd like Nate for clarification in that.
Can we put that back on the screen too, that way everybody's involved.
Sure.
The other one.
This one's a little better for me because it kind of tells you the difference between what was, what there was proposed.
Sure.
Yeah, it's a little foggy on there, but. All right, so just looking at this, okay, I'm looking here at this corner here. This is really what the property, this is the area that 845 would lose.
Correct.
And my question I asked earlier is, are they going to be making the property up somewhere else? And if so, where?
Yes, on the other side. So the fence line comes right here, right? So we're giving them this corner and they're giving us that corner. We're just trading those two triangles.
I see. And we're, and everybody else knows this except for me, but just to make sure we're clear. Where is Mr. Brown and Ms. Fletcher's property? So it's up here. So you're not proposing to change this boundary up at all?
No, no.
Okay.
Baxter, would you like to come up back to the podium, please?
Yeah, maybe you can clarify whether I can, just make sure this was being said, that it's like you're.
The lower part down by the sewer now, I mean, where the floodwater runs through.
Tracy, show him exactly what we're talking about.
We're talking, you know where I put up that picket fence? We spoke.
I don't go over there, so I don't know, no, I don't know.
Well, we spoke, you were back here and I was building the fence and you told me it was looking nice.
We're not looking at doing anything on yours.
Right.
Just between these.
Okay, but I know, I know when I, he's got one of them stakes that go in the air, you know, a lot just did. And now Richter has the same thing. But our property went.
Your property comes all the way from here that way.
Well, not that, don't go that way, it goes kind of along here.
Sure, sure.
See, so it's kind of coming, it's kind of, no, but it comes at that, well, you're just showing here that the fence, you didn't want, or you wanted to be able to put a car or truck or something. I don't know what's going to happen. I mean, whatever, you can't do it, that's. Anyway, our property line, right here with the stake.
Right, and this, this.
Still there, right?
Yeah, this way is your property or this way, you know.
Yeah, that's right.
That's your property. And we're not moving that at all.
Okay, no, but there's nothing, well, you're going to stay here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, but if you take, if you take the way this is running, this way, okay? And I told you, it's two separate pieces of property that she put together. But this lower one, at the same angle, is like this, see? And now, see, I'm just fixing the corner of this house up here. No, no, what?
Yeah, we're not affecting.
No, that's what I was saying, this goes out into the county parking lot. Now, what are you saying where it's up?
This one and this one. This is all we're moving. We're not affecting the back at all.
Okay, Baxter.
I only go to here.
Yes, sir, exactly.
Baxter, I think that they've explained it. And what I'd like for them to do is get with you after the fact and let you better understand what they are trying to explain. And they will show you. But from what I'm understanding is that this is not going to affect your property at all.
Oh, no, I think go ahead.
That it's only incumbent on the two property owners, and they're just trying to straighten up the lines. So again, after we're done here, if you. So, again, after we're done here, if you would like to get with Tracy and with Nate, so that you better understand, you and Sherry, then, then we can move forward with this. Because again, we've heard a lot this morning, and we understand that this is not affecting anybody except the two property owners, Nate and his wife, and the other property owner, which is already in agreement that this is allowable.
Fine, fine, fine. Can I just say one thing to him, and then I'll leave?
Sure, one more.
Here, look here, from my property line, is there, that's where the pin is, okay?
Yes, sir.
Well, look at the, this is the thing that's moving in, you get with the city on that.
Right, exactly.
Well, okay, it's not me at all.
Right.
That's right, it's not affecting you at all.
No, I know.
All right? All right. Thank you, folks. Thank you, Nate.
Yes, sir.
All right, I will now close this public hearing, and, um, I will request a motion for final, for a, for an approval for a plat amendment to amend the property line at eight twenty-five Van Patten, as noted here today by everyone that's been involved, um, here in the City of Truth or Consequences pursuant to Chapter fifteen, Section fifteen dash seventeen. Is there any, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that one, I'll get them there to approve, I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the plat amendment to amend the property line at eight twenty-five Van Patten, as noted. Are there any further questions, comments, or concerns?
No, yeah, Mike, are, are we, is this approving both sides of the property?
Just the center, isn't that correct?
I think, I would, uh, I would be in favor, since both property owners on that side are in agreement with, with this change, is that we approve the, uh, the plat amendment, uh, for the line adjoining eight twenty-five Van Patten and eight forty-five Van Patten. But there are issues with the other side dealing with the city property that have not been resolved. And I don't think we can move forward with, with that at this time. Uh, because in this, in essence, they are, uh, they are taking over a piece of, of city property, and the city is not getting anything in exchange for that. And that, uh, that has to be resolved, otherwise we are in violation of the anti-donation clause, because we are giving them property and not receiving any compensation for it. So we cannot, uh, we, we cannot approve that, uh, that side of the amendment until we have resolved that issue.
Tracy, is that? Is that correct?
Yeah, it's all right, I understand what you're talking about, Mr. G, you're talking about the bottom right-hand corner, I think is.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Okay, how's that?
So I'm asking the commission to approve for me to work with Jay and proceed forward for whatever steps we need to take, whether that is an easement issue, if it's a variance that we have to bring back, if it's a look at getting it appraised and a sale of the property, uh, anything like that, is what I'm requesting the commission to approve, because it costs my budget money to go out and get things surveyed and approved and everything.
Okay, so then that corner does affect the city, so you want this to be approved with the fact that you will be working with Jay on how the resolution to that piece that belongs to the city.
Correct.
Will come into play.
Correct.
Is that what your question was?
Yeah, so I would like to.
So that's what, that's what the motion should say.
Right, basically, I would, uh, and if I would, sort of, take a shot at re, oh, go ahead.
Let me go ahead and retract my motion there.
Okay.
Get that thing cleaned up first.
Okay. You'll retract your second? Okay.
Commissioner Zagedi, go ahead and make a motion.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so I would make a motion to approve the replating, uh, unconditionally for the boundary between eight twenty-five and eight forty-five Van Patten. And then, conditionally approve the replat for the east side of the property, pending, um, negotiations between the city staff, city attorney, and the property owners on how the, uh, to proceed with the property transfer on the other side.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
You have, okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve the plat amendment, as wonderfully stated by Commissioner George Zagedi. Could you let me hear me reading?
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just make sure we caught it there.
Please.
Okay, the motion I have is, um, to approve the replating unconditionally for the boundary between eight twenty-five and eight forty-five Van Patten, and conditionally approve the east side, um, pending negotiations between city staff, city attorney, and property owners on the other side.
And how to proceed with that piece of property? Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Is there any further questions, comments, or concerns?
You know, I'm not sure you can take a conditional thing to the bank.
Let's give me a second.
You know, I'm totally in favor of the, in between the two properties, because that does make an awful lot of sense. Um, uh, conditional's not gonna get you to the bank by the thirty-first of December. Well, you have, there's a problem?
Um, I don't know, we can.
I think I think you can do it today, though. I agree with Mr. Zagedi in a way, I think that's the one you kind of do really.
We, I mean, and.
Well, I think we ought to go ahead and do the negotiation on the city side of that property, which is very evident if you pull up a proper map. Um, but I definitely think they need to get that center line straight. And that doesn't make any sense for part of your building to sit on their property and part of their building to sit on yours. I mean, that's definitely a doable deal.
Manager Madrid.
And I think, uh, I think that the way Commissioners Zagedi made the motion is sufficient, because the intent, and, and we're going to retract and make the motion again, is to approve permanent, permanently and without restriction, the boundary between the two private property owners.
Can we make two motions?
And then. Well, we only have one action item.
Yeah, only one.
Or we can amend the motion.
We can, yeah. So do we need to amend this motion to?
I just, conditional won't take you to the bank.
Right, right.
Well, I mean, but, we cannot, we cannot solve the issue of the east side of that property at this meeting.
Oh, we can't?
I mean, we can direct city staff, I mean, we can, we can act, we can, we can withdraw that conditional approval and just direct city staff to proceed with negotiations for the transfer of that property.
Would that work?
And, and I think that's what the motion said, because he was specific in naming the boundary between the two properties.
And, and the reason I said that is saying that, you know, when I said conditional approval, is that we approve of the position of that line, okay? And, and we, we don't, we're not arguing with where that line is. It's just that, you know, the actual transfer of the property is going, is a separate issue that has to be resolved before we can, we can grant that final approval.
But to, to the Commissioner's point, Commissioners Zagedi, the word conditional in there at all does tie up the entire agenda item. So I think we have to be specific in approving the boundary between the two private properties and nothing else.
So.
And then I, I will accept direction to resolve the other boundaries.
Yep, I like that much.
Right, so would you amend your motion?
Okay, so, just cut everything off, uh.
Just the conditional.
Let me, let me read, read, go back here. So, approve the replating for the boundary between eight twenty-five and eight forty-five Van Patten.
Period.
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 Okay.
Okay, consider it amended.
Amended, amended second, amended and amended second. All right, is there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed saying sign, motion carries. Thank you. That was very easy, thank you all. Thank you, thank you. The next item on our agenda is, uh, G, ordinances, resolutions, and zoning. We have G one, discussion action, resolution number twenty-two nineteen slash twenty, to accept, accept the N M E D Construction Programs Bureau, C P B, Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund offer, and designating signatory, signatory authority for related documentation. City Manager Madrid.
Excuse me, Mayor. Mayor, Commissioners, I'm sorry. Can we take a five-minute break?
Yes, that would be very nice. We will take a five-minute break before we proceed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, the next item on our agenda this morning is item G, ordinances, resolutions,
and zoning. G one, discussion action, resolution number twenty-two nineteen slash twenty, to accept the N M, N M E D Construction Programs Bureau, C P B, Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund offer, and designating signatory authority for related documentation. Manager Madrid.
Mayor, Commissioners, this resolution is required by the funding entity, uh, for acceptance, but mainly to designate signatory authority.
And that's.
We have, uh, to also request authority for, uh, as designated for any extensions, that's not decided, not decided, never mind, Mayor.
Okay.
That's for signature authority on this particular funding agreement.
And the signature authority would be for you, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion to?
Tracy.
Is, Tracy, okay.
I, I manage confusion in the other. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, Pro Tem and Commissioners, uh, on the second page of the resolution is the specific signatory authorities for the, uh, various things that might occur, like I would be a signatory authority to request the reimbursements. Uh, the N M E D requires their format. This resolution was previously brought to you guys with somewhat of the same language, but it wasn't in their format, and it didn't specify each individual signatory authority or their successor. So the breakdown is both in the resolution and on the second page of the resolution.
Thank you. Is there any further, is there any questions from the commission? No questions? Do I stand, I stand for a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution number twenty-two nineteen slash twenty, to accept the N M, N M E D Construction Program Bureau, Programs Bureau, C P B, Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund offer, and designating a signature authority for related documents, and that signature authority would be to Manager Madrid, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Kathy Clark?
Aye.
Honorable Ralph Fisher?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable George Zagedi?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item this morning is G two, discussion action, resolution number twenty-three nineteen slash twenty, amending resolution number sixteen nineteen slash twenty, proclaiming the March third, two thousand and twenty, regular municipal officer election. Manager Madrid.
I'll refer this one to our city clerk, your name? If you got some background.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, um, as our Mayor Pro Tem did bring up on the terms, we did discover that, that instead of, um, Commissioner Zagedi's term should be a two-year for the next one, it should be a four-year term. And, um, in, in all the, further research, I do discover that Steve Green's term did expire twenty-twenty, which would make that one a four-year term going forward. The notification has been given to the Secretary of State's office, and it's already been included on the final proclamation that went out on February fourth. And also another minor change on the, um, um, runoff election requirements, where I just changed the wordings to the way the Secretary of State finally gave us the wording for. We did not have them in the pass for resolution, to where, um, a runoff would be required, and I think it's if the top two vote-getters, um, are within one percent of the vote, ten percent of the vote, I think, then you're required to have a runoff. But I just put the wording in there per the local election act. So if there was a runoff that was required, that would be the reason. If for some reason, um, a couple of Commissioners mentioned wanting to do the at-large, if you look up at section, um, I didn't have it on here, on the section where the positions that are available is included, which would be section number?
Two.
Two. Um, if the commission wanted to change this from position two, four, and five, to three, four-year term at-large Commissioners, it could be done at this point. There are, I will tell you, um, quite a few municipalities who ran into this. So the, the Secretary of State's proclamation has kind of a combination of all of the above. So there's, um, you know, by combination, I say there's, I believe about six municipalities that have ours listed as positions who are not currently districted. You have other, um, city commission manager form of governments who are districted, over ten thousand, who have District One Commissioner. So there are about five or six others that have positions, and if you did want to make that change, now would be the time, but we would have to amend the state proclamation with the Secretary of State's office.
Mayor, um, our next meeting is January eighth. Names have to go into the city clerk on the seventh.
Pardon?
So the timing is either now or not, or two years from now. And I do still want to say again, I think that's a really good idea, because it keeps that competition out, you don't need to determine who you want to fight against, you're only just going out on your merit.
Right.
Um, and I think that it wouldn't be a bad experiment.
Now, if we.
Can we do it?
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. If we do, if, if we were to go that direction now for this upcoming election, and it didn't work out, can it be changed in future elections, back to the way it was?
I don't know how to refer to legal, but I would say that if the city, if the commission decides to change this at this point, it will more than likely remain that way, because you will have a harder time changing it then.
Right, right, well, I was just, you know, because somebody may come along and say, well, I don't like it this way, and. Attorney Rubin, do you have any questions or comments on that?
I don't really answer that question. If you change it, if you try to change it back, I don't experience this on that, I'm sorry, I don't know. I, I, I tend to agree with, uh, Ms. Cant, and, uh, you know, once you change it, I think it would be difficult to try and go back to it, but I, I don't, I've never looked into that before.
Now, again, and I, I don't know the specifics of like the New Mexico election law, uh, but uh, in, in places we have lived where they had, uh, at-large positions, if, um, if there were three positions open, each voter would get, would be allowed to, to select three candidates, okay? So, if we have here, say we have, uh, seven hundred voters, and if we do it this way, there would be seven hundred votes cast for each position. If you do it at, at large and allow people to select three candidates, you would still have twenty-one hundred votes cast. Going, uh, one vote per person, uh, spread among three candidates, uh. Going one vote per person, spread among three candidates, means that, let's see, it'd be a lot, third, you're basically talking about a Commissioner being elected with maybe a hundred and fifty votes, and that does not reflect the majority, a majority of the voters. And I do not, I do not like it like that, but if we were to change it and allow them to make three selections, three at-large selections, I think that would be a much fairer way to do it.
That's how it would be written.
That would have, it has to be that way?
Yeah, it would be written, there are three positions available, the voters who elect would have the opportunity to vote for three.
Okay, so that...
So it would be the top three...
The three top highest vote-getters.
Votes.
Okay, now...
elected.
Now, that being said, this is a significant change to make, just as is, and outside of Mr. Penn's comments here, we have not heard from anyone else in the public. And we, the one thing we've been hearing more and more lately is that we do things without opportunity for public comment, and I would hesitate to make any change unless we have a workshop where we discuss this with the public and get their input on it.
Thank you.
I think there's some merit to that, because actually, when you look at the agenda and the package, I mean, the force of this resolution that, you know, that Commissioner Segetti's talking about, I think if they're going to change, or if you do the resolution, it probably has no special meaning, I think.
And at this point, the main proclamation's been already adopted and published by the Secretary of State.
Well, I think at this time, then, we just need to move forward with what's on the agenda and look into the future elections that may come up at doing something like this. Okay, so, is there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, I will stand for a motion to approve resolution number twenty-three nineteen slash twenty, amending resolution number sixteen nineteen slash twenty proclaiming the March third, two thousand twenty, regular municipal officer election as discussed and noted by Clerk Canton.
You know, I wish you hadn't thrown the wrench in the ointment over there, Commissioner Segetti. But you have a good point, you got a really good point.
But I'm glad you did, thank you.
I've got an ample supply of wrenches. And a pretty decent growing art.
All right.
And I agree with Mr. Segetti, I think we don't need to make these reactions here.
Correct, correct, yes.
So I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, do I have, here a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second to approve resolution number twenty-three nineteen slash twenty, amending resolution number sixteen nineteen slash twenty as noted. Is there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by, oh, roll call votes, oh, I forget that, sleeping on the job.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Yes.
Honorable Kathy Clark?
Aye.
Honorable Ralph Heschler?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Yes.
Honorable George Segetti?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item this morning is G three, discussion action, resolution number twenty-four nineteen slash twenty to accept the I C I P for fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five. Can you imagine those numbers already? City Manager Madrid.
I'm not in middle school anymore. I, this item, Mayor, I know has created some discussion. This is not intended to show that this is a priority for the city, or that the city's going to take any action to damage what we have in place. I think that we all agree, and I'll state for the record, that our visitor center downtown is our priority. However, the state legislative officials like to see collaboration and unity among government entities, and they showed that, and we accommodated that by having a meeting with them with Elephant Butte and Williamsburg and the county and us in demonstrating that we are united in our funding requests, that if we receive funding, we will collaborate among and with each other. This is a request to show that we would support a state-funded or any other type of funded facility that they might think of building, whether it's in Sierra County, whether it's in T R C, whether it's on the Spaceport property itself. This is a statement of support, this is the form that was requested, that it be included on I C I P. That's really what this is. This is not a statement of disregard, disrespect, or disapproval of anything that we have going now. It is a statement that we want to continue a good relationship with the Spaceport because we can benefit from that. We are not territorial, and I'll give you an example. Where I came from, in Las Vegas, there was three visitor center. One of them was a simple little red caboose that had been renovated to welcome you right at one of the exits. The other one is an old railroad depot where you could go in and tour and actually get information and tours of the town and better explanation of what Las Vegas has to offer. And then the other one was downtown, right on the plaza, right where someone could walk out and point you to here and here and here, just like we can in our downtown center. And I think that we should always be open-minded to collaborate and cooperate with others for something good. If it's ultimately not going to hurt us, we can collaborate with the Spaceport in any facility to promote T R C. And in speaking with the people from the Spaceport, that is one of their objectives also. That's not on our item, but that exists. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Manager. Do I have any questions from the Commission?
Putting this on our I C I P, I think we need to look at a couple of things with respect to this. The Spaceport Visitor Center, the North Side Visitor Center is a project of the Spaceport Authority, and it is a state-funded and operated entity. And appearing, there, okay, there's two issues on it. The first one is putting this on our I C I P, does that mean that we are in any way saying that the city will put money into this?
No.
No.
That, now, okay, that's the reality of this. Now, the other part is, is the perception. By putting this on our I C I P, does that generate a belief in the public's eyes that we are intending to spend our money on a facility which should be funded by the state? And I believe it does. I don't see, I don't have any problem with supporting it and with supporting the state, but I look at, and many others view, the I C I P is those projects that the city intends to pursue through their own funding or by grants and stuff coming from other places. And putting an item on there which is not in any way being funded through the city's budget, I think it's inappropriate. We can write letters of support and anything else, but I believe it is totally inappropriate for this to be on our I C I P. And tacking it on at the last minute without any opportunities for public comment, I'm throwing that monkey wrench back in here, I think that is also, that is also wrong. We've had public workshops on the I C I P, and if we wanted this in there, it should have been brought up where the public is allowed to comment on it as well. That's all I have to say about it.
Would you like a response, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And I will say, for the record, that the city does not intend to invest any of our resources in it. We couldn't afford it if we wanted to. However, we are committed to collaborating with all the other government entities, the Village of Williamsburg, Elephant Butte, and the county. I think our esteemed county manager was here to see, to make sure that we were going to support this, because they've been asked to do the same thing. And as in, at D F A and Board of Finance and other entities, the support, as you said, Commissioner, normally is in the form of a resolution or a letter from the mayor. We were asked to take this action, I'm not sure why, and there may be funding ideas in the roundhouse that we're not aware of. I think an example that's relatively like this would be the hospital, where we didn't directly pay for anything, however, we did collaborate to express our support and our need for that, and it was funded through capital outlay. So although we were not, we didn't lay out a dollar, we did express the support that if the funding is there, we're behind it, and we will cooperate with the other entities.
Thank you, Manager Madrid. Other questions?
You know, the state's been in the process of closing their tourist information centers in the state, not opening new ones. I have a real concern about us not being around when this comes up in two thousand twenty-five, for example. And I know that, and I've heard, and I confirmed it earlier, that the Spaceport itself is thinking about putting in a visitor center, that they've got people there to man it, and they're funded by the state. This would be a new funding location if it weren't out of the Spaceport itself. My concern is that it's going to end up this big white elephant someplace, and it'll be on somebody's property, and the city will end up taking it or will go vacate it, like the vacated ones in Raton, like the ones down in Anthony. And I think if we were going to add something to an I C I P, I would put something on the I C I P for six or seven million dollars that actually was a quality of life issue for this community. Even though we believe in tourism, I think that the Tourism Office downtown does a very good job, and the city put that in because we were promised a visitor center when we all voted for the Spaceport in two thousand six, and it didn't happen. So the city's been funding the one downtown. What makes you think that if this came in, or someplace other than the Spaceport, that the city wouldn't end up having to take it over? And because these answers aren't clear to me, and especially because I've been involved with the state tourism for many, many, many years, and I know that this is not where they're putting their money. And there are many places across the nation, and many places internationally, that are closing their visitor centers because people are using their electronic equipment to get the information that they're looking for. So that being said, I'm kind of with Commissioner Segetti right now. I think this is a last-minute decision, and to put this in there without those qualifications, I would really admire us cooperating, but I do believe that the city has put money into the hospital because we own that. And I know that we have. We've actually put our people's tax money into that hospital. And I don't have enough confidence in this particular issue right here unless it was told specifically that it would be out of the Spaceport. That's my comment, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions, comments, concerns?
Well, my comment is, is that, you know, I would feel that putting this on the I C I P plan, I mean, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to go out and get the money right away, or spend the money, or put it here, or put it there, put it wherever. I mean, I feel that if there's money that is out there from the state, that the state can give money, and let's all collaborate here, you know, the county, the village, the city of T R C, and the city of Elephant Butte, again, when the state sees that we're all in conjunction and working together, they may say, hey, they're working together, they're not fighting. You know, I hear a lot of that, you know, that we fight, we never get along, you're never happy with one another, you know? I mean, and so, who wants to help anybody that's fighting and not getting along? And so, again, it's not going to cost us anything. This may stay on the I C I P plan, they may look at it, it may be forty years down the road before we see anything with it. So again, just because we've got it on the I C I P plan, doesn't mean that they're going to fund it this next session, doesn't mean that they're going to fund it in the next ten years, but at least it's on paper, and at least it's something that we support. I mean, our downtown visitor center is doing great, you know, I mean, and there are a lot of people that go in there and visit, and a lot of people that see it, and I see that, I see that. So again, I don't see anything wrong with putting it on our I C I P, but I'm just one, so that's my comment.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I will stand for, if there's no, any further questions, I will stand for a motion to approve resolution number twenty-four nineteen slash twenty to accept the I C I P for fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five. Do I hear a motion? Do I have a motion? I will make that motion. Okay, do I have a second? I have a second. Is there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Kathy Clark?
Nay.
Honorable Ralph Heschler?
I don't think I can vote at this time because I have, I work at Spaceport for a contractor, and I don't want to present a conflict of interest.
Okay. Honorable Paul Baca? Honorable George Segetti?
Nay.
Okay, it's a tie.
The motion didn't pass.
Okay, motion did not pass. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item H, new business, H one, discussion action, review the funding application request as recommended by the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. Manager Madrid.
Mayor Commissioners, the Lodger's Tax, to begin the fiscal year, did not appropriate all of the funding that was available. They have received two additional, two additional applications that they considered and are recommending funding for. They are both in the amount of eight hundred dollars. One is to the Sierra County Arts Council, the other is to the Bountiful Alliance. They are recommending both applications for funding. We don't have any reason not to concur, and I'm recommending their approval at this time.
Thank you. And did these applicants submit their reports on time?
They haven't submitted reports because they haven't been funded yet.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor signify, oh, I need a motion, sorry.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, to approve the...
Funding applications.
...funding applications from the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, Mayor.
I have a motion in a second to review the funding application request as recommended by the Lodger's Tax Advisory Boards for A, Sierra County Arts Council, and B, the Bountiful Alliance. Is there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, sign. Motion carries. The next item is item H two, discussion action, publication of the ordinance from the verified initiative petition calling for an ordinance imposing a ten-year moratorium prohibiting the acquisition, installation, or maintenance of smart meter technology, A M I, or other real-time within truth or consequences utility jurisdiction. Manager Madrid.
Mayor Commissioners, this is just a part of the process. Mayor Commissioners, this is, uh, just a part of the process, and this approval would be for publication only. We are not deciding anything here today. I'm sure that there's going to be, uh, much more discussion and debate regarding this. This is just for publication so that the process can move forward and, uh, the ordinance can be considered, uh, for final approval at a later date. This is for publication only.
Thank you. Do I have any questions, comments, concerns from the commission? Hearing none, I will stand for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we put this ordinance out for publication, um, this verified initiative petition calling for an ordinance imposing a 10-year moratorium prohibiting the acquisition, installation, or maintenance of small meter technology within the TRC utility jurisdiction.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
We have no choice. It has to be published.
I'll second that motion. Is there any further, I have a motion in a second to go out to publication of the ordinance from the Verified Initiative Petition as noted by Mayor Protem Clark. Is there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. This, uh, ordinance will go out for publication. Thank you. The next item is Item I, Reports. City Manager.
I have a few guests for my manager's report today, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, the first person I'd like to call up is Kyle, because our pool, uh, is going to be closed. He had an idea for a polar bear season, and we are going to try it out. So go ahead, Kyle.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Kyle Blacklock. I'm the pool supervisor, and, uh, first and foremost, I'd like to thank the city manager and all the commissioners for the support of the pool. I think that the pool is a very important asset for a lot of people within this community, especially for those who are dealing with things such as arthritis or chronic pains of any kind. You know, the people who, uh, have a hard time going for hikes or even running on treadmills or things like that. So having the pool open to give these people a chance to get up, to stay active and stay healthy is a great opportunity for the community. And having the support of all you really means a lot, not only to me, but for everyone at the pool and for the whole community. So thank you, all of you, I really appreciate it. Now, without further ado, on behalf of the J. Hodges Municipal Pool, I am very excited to announce that the pool will be reopening December 14th, which is this Saturday. And, uh, sorry, a little nervous. Uh, this is going to be the start of what I am calling our polar bear season, and will be open, we will be open Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. Our hours will be from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. for lap swim, and then 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. for open swim. Um, also, I'd like to throw out there that the best way to stay up to date with anything correlated is to join our Facebook page, which is the J. Hodges Municipal Pool. And if, uh, Facebook isn't your thing, you can always call the pool at 575-894-6151. Thank you, and happy holidays.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Polar bear swim, how exciting.
I just want to know if they're going to be renting scuba suits or something like that.
Scuba or scooby?
Scooby.
Scuba, okay. Thank you, Kyle. Uh, the next announcement that I have is, uh, I think, uh, an area of concern that I've had that needs to be addressed within the city is the communication, uh, between the administration, and I'll say myself, and the community in general for certain things like emergency or special events, uh, if we have a situation and we've had with major water leaks, uh, we haven't been as effective as we could be in getting the word to the right parties on a timely basis and providing the updates. We've been, uh, managing it, but we could do better. And I think one of the first things for us to do better in managing communications is, uh, I have appointed the Deputy Chief, Erica Baker, as our Public Information Officer, and she will be the primary point of contact. Would you step up and give a little bit of your background, Erica? Especially in, in, uh, the areas of events that affect our citizens, uh, that are critical in nature, power outages, water outages, things like that, to be able to communicate at one central point and control all of our media, our, our Facebook, our website, uh, our communication with the schools, the hospital, the radio stations, the newspaper, uh, where she will be the point, collecting information from our staff and getting it out to the public. And instead of having a hit or miss type of approach, it'll be one person, and, uh, if she's not available, she'll have a designate to take over. Give us a little bit of your background.
Uh, first of all, good morning, uh, Commissioners, Mayor, City Manager. I'm, I'm really excited to, uh, take on this new position. As you know, I wear a lot of hats anyways, but I can multitask pretty well, so I'm excited for this position. Um, I attended two years ago the New Mexico Broadcasters Association Public Information Officer Course, um, where I was certified, and that was in Albuquerque, New Mexico. Um, I do our announcements on our Facebook pages for the police department, um, currently. So when I was asked if I would take over this position, I said, of course, whatever you need from me. So, um, part of that is I'll be consolidating the city's Facebook page. Um, instead of having several different Facebook pages for each department, there'll just be one main Facebook page. This will also limit our liability as far as what can be taken off of those social media posts and used against the city as well. So instead of having those separate ones, we'll have one consolidated one, and any important information that needs to get out to the public or that needs to be announced, um, for information, um, it'll be posted through there as well as the city's website.
Thank you, Ms. Erica.
So, uh, just to summarize, if any of you all, uh, have any requests for information, uh, naturally you can always call me, but, uh, our PIO will always be kept up to date.
Manager Madrid?
Yes, sir.
If I may ask, um, I understand that, uh, the city is also, uh, has also already paid for an emergency announcement system, the Code Red system?
We have not. No, we were considering acquiring that, but we haven't acquired it yet.
Okay, well, I had, I had heard different.
No, that's not true. Absolutely not true. There is, uh, a system that I've seen, uh, that most, that not most, a few, a few counties use in their emergency, as part of their emergency management, where the public can sign up, uh, on the website, put in their telephone numbers, and we, and receive automated calls in cases of emergency, much like the school system uses to notify the parents.
Does the county have that? I remember-
They have the Code Red.
I remember doing that a couple of, uh, a couple of years back.
I think the county has the Code Red.
County has it, they have the Code Red.
Can we, can we tap into that as, as?
The Code Red, we've been told, has to meet certain criteria. For example, we weren't able to use the Code Red when we had that major water leak because it didn't meet the 12-hour, uh, timeframe that it was going to last, we didn't know how long it was going to last. But, uh, the Code Red is, uh, we can acquire Code Red, and we can acquire similar software. And as we develop our emergency management, uh, team and system, we will be acquiring something like that, that citizens can sign up for and receive the calls. We'll have to do a major recruitment to get people to sign up, but every private citizen will be able to receive a call.
We can have a discussion on this later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, thank you, Deputy Chief. Uh, the last thing that I wanted to discuss was our, uh, our meeting with the American, American Organics, Ameri-Green Organics Corporation. And, uh, just in, in response to some comments by the, the Chamber of Commerce, uh, you know, we have, the city has a very good relationship with all of the other government entities. Uh, I think, uh, Hunter's right that communication needs to improve, but the effectiveness of the chamber has, has always been a question with me. And the city cannot always wait for, uh, people to get involved or regenerate things. Uh, I think the city, and the county especially, because I meet with, uh, management leaders and elected officials at least once a month from those entities, we collaborate very well. If it hadn't been for Bruce Swingle, I wouldn't have even known about yesterday's meeting. We did represent ourselves very well as Commissioners Zegetti did prior to, and, uh, you know, there, there may be some times where, uh, the mayor can't attend, so I'll attend. I can't attend, so the mayor can't, will attend, or another commissioner will attend, as long as we are able to state our commitment, um, and, uh, our, our collaborative efforts with whoever it is, whatever entity it is, uh, I think, you know, there's, there's other things, as simple as our, uh, Capitol Christmas tree. Uh, I wasn't there, the mayor was there, it was a wonderful community event. I mean, uh, none of us as an individual are, uh, anything equivalent to a higher being. We all can represent the city effectively in our own way, knowing that we don't act as individuals, we act on behalf of the city. In regard to this company, uh, I, uh, in a discussion with them, we got a real good idea of what their needs are going to be, and the commitment that we made was we would make the city of truth and consequences as friendly and as easy to work with, and we would cooperate to any extent that we could. Uh, that was allowable within the law, because we can't actually write a check to a private company for their operations. However, we can guide them through the process it takes to remodel, to rezone, to, uh, recruit for employees, to find housing, all of those things that we can assist in, we will. We need to be better at recruiting jobs and businesses, and this is, uh, hopefully going to be one of our success stories, you know, and, and thank you, Commissioner, for your initial contact. So I just wanted everyone to know that this is going to be, uh, an environmentally friendly, uh, and very innovative company, that it looks like they are committed, uh, to covering. Uh, I think the only thing that is not finalized is the acquisition of the building. That involves a lease purchase instead of a straight purchase. That should be resolved in the next month and a half. Uh, once that's resolved, then the renovation of the building and the adaptation, uh, will commence. That should be complete by June. At that point, staffing would begin at very good paying jobs for 50 to 80 employees, and we look forward to that happening. So it was a very, a very fruitful meeting. We had the Secretary of Economic Development here, uh, the county was there, we had the interested parties that need to support this endeavor, and any other ones that like it, that are like it, that want to come into town, we want to talk to and we want to support. Um, also, in relation to my, uh, come, uh, what do you call it, town hall meetings, the last one that I had that I want to report on now, uh, I, I have to admit that I forgot my key to the chambers, so I sat outside and waited to see who would show up, and, uh, Montfortre, Montfortre showed up, and we sat on the bench outside, it was a beautiful evening, and we had a long discussion about utility leaks. Uh, he was the only one that showed up that night, I think because the evening was so nice. So, uh, I have my key permanently on my ring now. He was the only one there. I want to remind everybody that tonight, I have another town hall meeting, because this is our only meeting in December, tonight at 6 o'clock here. I won't forget my key, and I'll see you tonight at 6. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Attorney Rubin, do you have a report?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Baca?
I do not, thank you.
Mayor Protem Clark?
No, Mayor.
No reports?
I just want to wish everybody great holidays, take care of yourselves and the neighbors, and some other important-
Thank you. Commissioner Zegetti?
Thank you. Um, there are just a couple of things, I will make it short, and I probably should have mentioned this earlier, but on the, uh, the PUAV has approved the, uh, the utility forgiveness, uh, the cuff thing, and that was in the minutes that we looked at, and it hasn't shown up on the agenda yet, either, can we expect to see that in the next?
Yes, I can have some draft language for you, possibly for the next meeting.
Okay, all right.
We do have the ability to, uh, implement some of that administratively already, and we are.
The other thing, uh, there was a meeting some time ago, uh, about the, uh, the county and their flood thing, and I believe you were there. I did have a short conversation with the county manager. Um, the property owners of the city pay as much full to that flood district as they do to the city in property taxes. So there's a substantial amount of, of, of city property owners' tax money that is supporting that. And in a brief discussion with Manager Swingle, uh, we can use that money. Uh, the, uh, they have done a, a flood study for us in the past using that money, and it is still there and, and still available, but it is up to the city to go to them to ask for money. And we do have significant flooding issues downtown, and I think it would behoove us to take advantage of that. And, uh, if we, especially if we wanted to get a, uh, fund a study about what can be done about the downtown flooding issues, and that would be a, a good source for that funding. Compared to a lot of their other projects, you know, that would be a relatively minor expense. Now, and another item, and this, I'm just throwing this out, I, you know, watch all kinds of stuff, but, you know, there are, uh, and again, on emergency management issues, uh, you know, and we look at, one of the things we look at possibility is a, uh, a grid, electric grid outage outside of the city of truth or consequences, um, where we may be without electrical power for, for days or longer. Uh, we are in a very fortunate situation where we have our own solar power grid, and with, I believe, minor modifications, uh, a little bit of switching and stuff, we can, uh, fix our system, isolate, identify and isolate critical facilities that need power. And then, in a case of an emergency like that, the power from our solar farm can be used to, uh, provide power to these critical facilities and keep, uh, the basic infrastructure going, I mean, particularly the water and sewer plants. I mean, you don't want to, you want people to have water, and you don't want to be dumping raw sewage in the river. And with the, uh, with our own solar production facility, we have the opportunity to do that, and I think it would be something that, uh, it would be in the city's best interest to look at as part of their, uh, disaster preparedness plan. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Zegetti. And I would just like to wish my fellow commissioners, Manager Madrid, Clerk Canton, all your families, staff, community, a very Merry Christmas. Gosh, it seems like it's just right around the corner and another year gone past, but I would wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a very prosperous New Year, and hope things will be better and better in the year 2020. Can you imagine 2020 already? And that's all I have. The next item on our agenda is Executive Session. We have two items. Item J1, Limited Personal- We have two items, Item J1, Limited Personnel Matters, Various Positions Pursuant to Ten Fifteen One H2, and J2, Threatened and Pending Litigation Current or Possible Litigation Pursuant to Ten Fifteen One H7. Do I have a motion to go into Executive Session? Do I have a second? Motion in a second to go into Executive Session. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Senator Wyhan?
Aye.
Honorable Kathy Clark?
Aye.
Honorable Will Peshler?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable George Zagetti?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Don't forget, Friday night, Friday the 13th. Old-fashioned Christmas parade, light show, excitement, excitement. Please come and join us. Forty, forty, um, entry, forty entries into the library this year. Fabulous, fabulous.
I think we have one.
And you started that, Mayor. Nice work.
Bye, everybody. Thanks, Kyle.
I didn't want to throw it out.
Yeah.
Let's just ditch.
I see, I can do the podium up this way, like we always talk about, so I can see everybody.
Oh, okay, okay, good. Thanks.
Can you leave the first one or anything?
Um, no, I don't think so. I think you're done.
Okay, I'm not handing this to you, I'll cheat you, I'll cheat you. It's pretty important.
You haven't gotten to noon in a while.